Welcome to the Grand Rapids Board of Education Board Meeting. Today is Monday, May 7th. Let us start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Randalls.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Slade.
Present.
Baker.
Here.
Faub.
Here.
Geetson, present. President Lanier.
President. You have an agenda before us. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with some amendments.
Okay.
In regards to the action items that are currently posted on the agenda for second reading, we never technically voted on any of the policy changes at the previous board meeting, so those should not be reflected as final readings. I would ask that we add include a discussion item, as was the recommendation of the policy committee per the discussion at the previous board meeting, that the policy committee develop potential scenarios for the subsequent upcoming election cycle changes.
Mr. O'Connor, my recollection is different from yours regarding those policies, and as I watched the video, I did find that we did have a first reading for those policies.
Point of order, we needed support for the amendment, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Support. No discussion.
In, I watched the video as well, and according to Mr. Ross's motion, motion that the policy committee review the language in order to potentially establish something that gives us the cycle for six-year terms, were his exact words.
Reverend Hoskins.
Actually, when I watched the video, it's Mr. Ross's statement was, he made a motion to switch from four- to six-year election cycle with the caveat of the policy committee reviewing the language for potential establishment of a structure for how do we get to that six years?
Mr. Ross made a motion, the motion was removed and then subsequently amended.
I don't remember it being removed.
I'll make a motion that we table this so I can review the video and tell you exactly what I said.
No, no.
If we can't come to...
I can pull it up right here.
I was gonna say, look at the video.
In John's email, the motion, he, the motion was exactly as John wrote it, the language in, and that was my understanding going out, but I wasn't 100%, so I went back and watched the video. And that was the motion as stated and worded.
When I read, when I watched the video, because I actually wasn't 100% sure, but when I watched the video, there's actually more to the motion that you have to watch in order to kind of capture everything that was discussed, because after the motion started, there were a couple interjections in the midst, and I think Mr. Ross's amendment was just to kind of capture what was discussed after his original motion. So he was including the piece regarding having the board, or excuse me, having the ad hoc policy committee to then come up with the transition. And it's, it's quite clear, and you do have to watch beyond, you have to watch before and after.
Just all of it.
The actual...
Watch the entire meeting.
Okay.
Actually, we all watched this, so everybody's got a different interpretation. Let's watch it again.
I haven't watched it, so...
Secondly, the recommendation of the policy review committee was to provide to the full board for review and consideration all five options which were out, which were charged to the policy committee to review subsequent to the last board meeting. And the recommendation has been brought forth from the policy committee to review all five election options and have this board as a full body discuss them and determine the course of action, which they deem most appropriate for this community.
Which I don't disagree with that portion, I just wanted to be clear that there was a first reading of the policies as it relates to the motion that was set before at the April 16th meeting.
There was no...
Who wants the floor?
I'd like to, there was, the first, there was a planned first reading, and the planned first reading were of four-year terms that came from unanimous vote from the policy committee. There was a discussion as to whether or not that was what the board wanted, and then very strongly, and again, I looked at this too, that there was an argumentation that there was, there did seem to be a preference at that time for six-year terms, but there was a clear role to send it back to the policy committee for consideration of the possible, consideration of what six-year terms would look like and what the logistics would be about doing that, and then to bring that back to the board. But the first reading as written was for four-year terms.
You're absolutely correct, Dr. Baker, but with any first reading, modifications to any policy can be made. Actually, you asked that question at the last board meeting. Can we legally make a modification to a policy that's brought before the board during a first reading? And the response was, yes, indeed, we can. So, you're right. The first reading, the recommendation from the policy committee was to have four-year terms, as was written, but then the motion, based on the deliberation, was to switch the four-year to six-years. That was, and then, in addition to that, the request for the policy, ad hoc policy committee to then come up with a transition plan to get us from four-years to six-years. As you may recall, we had lengthy discussion about, that's cumbersome, it's gonna take a long time for us to get to that process, and so that's why it was best to just allow the ad hoc policy committee to do that review. Did I see your hand or yours? Yours, Mr. Ross?
Mine, but I just, a quick question, Mr. O'Connor, when is, what's the deadline for getting this resolved, anyway?
If we remain at four-year terms, there, we don't have to do anything other than change our bylaws. If we choose to go to six-year terms, we must submit an election plan to the state of Michigan prior, 100 days prior to the November election, which I believe would be July 1st.
So again, I think I'm gonna more strongly reiterate my motion to table this, so we can all review the video. It seems nonsensical to bicker when it's not time sensitive.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Faub.
I think it's very important for procedure and point of order that motions are honored for the varied language that they're given. And when a motion, there was a lot of discussion around it before and after, but the iteration of the motion, and that came after discussion, after a sense that we didn't have a mapping of what it would look like with the terms and the times, there was confusion about it. And then the iteration of the motion was amended and very specific, and it was repeated twice. And it was motion that the policy committee review the language in order to potentially establish something that gives us the cycle for six-year terms. That was the motion as stated, that's what was voted on. I think we need to honor the varied language. We don't reinterpret it based on context, the very language in which the motion was stated is what should stand as the motion and what was voted on.
That amendment was in addition to the original motion, and I think to Mr. Ross's point, because he was the one who set the motion, it would be, I think it would be fair to allow him an opportunity to have a chance to review the video so that he can give us the interpretation of his motion. I think that, to me, just seems like the best thing to do in this case.
I think my original amendment to this agenda still stands, I would, we should still have a discussion regarding these potential election terms, since that was the charge of the policy committee. And if we are determined to take action, we can take action. We have the language drafted for both four-year and six-year terms as it relates to both, to all three policies which are attached here. If, if there's a belief that this body has had a first, first reading of, of the policies, regardless of the term length, if we are allowing ourselves to amend the, the term, we could still potentially have a reading tonight, whether it's a first or a second, based on the fact that we have the policies already drafted.
And I don't disagree with that, but I think it's very important to Dr. Faub's point that we need to know whether this is a second reading or not before we, in my opinion, merge into that discussion. I wouldn't have a problem with having that as a separate discussion regarding the transition plan, maybe under action items, but I think, I think it needs to be clear whether this is a second reading or not. If some of us have the interpretation that it is and others have that it is not, I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to either, for us to enter into that discussion under these policies without having that to be a clear picture, so...
Well, for safety sake, we could always have a third reading.
I guess I don't really understand the point, so we're gonna put off for two weeks until we review this, to decide whether or not we had a first reading two weeks ago.
You're asking me, or are you asking Mr. Ross? He's making the request, I think you should ask Mr. Ross.
Okay, Mr. Ross, yes, I would like, I mean, so I think that the point of this was for the board, was for the policy committee to come up with some good ideas and what the logistics would look like. The policy committee did as was directed, which was to go to, into meeting, and all of the policy committee came to a variety of options for us to consider tonight. And so, that's what the point of the work is. Now, I don't know exactly why it's so important to make sure that the last meeting said it was a first reading, unless there, I mean, I just...
To be consistent with, you know, if the agenda sets such, you have to have...
But I think that there's a disagreement as to whether or not we all understood that there was a first reading.
That's why I think it's important for us to make sure that it's clear for our legal document, which would be the minutes, the agenda, et cetera, to make sure that we're clear whether it was or was not. I think that's extremely important as a public body, to make sure that what we're reporting out is accurate. I think that's extremely...
We have not adopted minutes from the previous meeting, is that considered part of our consent agenda? So what I'm asking for is not...
I think one of the other reasons that it's important is whether we vote again, you know? If we already voted, and we figure that out that we have, we wouldn't vote again. If we have not voted, then, of course, we'd be voting.
Why would we vote?
Well, I will say...
That's the whole point.
Had a vote?
The best of my, my recollection, and I guess my intent for the motion was for us to see what the six-year options would look like, and the impression that I carried from that was that we would then finalize, I guess, really vote. At that time, I didn't, it seemed that we were more so just having, I don't know if there's a such thing as an unofficial vote, but it seemed that if we were just sort of gauging the feel of the board and which way people were leaning, not necessarily voting strictly for six or four, but more so wanting to see what the options were, because at that time, only options we had were four-year options. And I know at the time, I was leaning towards six-year options, but I really wanted to see what those options looked like compared to four-year options before I made a final decision. And I guess that was my intent, maybe I didn't articulate it clearly, which is definitely possible, but nonetheless, you know, since, you know, my potential ambiguity or whatever the case seems to be at the center of the discussion, I just wanted to see what exactly I said myself, as opposed to people telling me what I said.
I think that's fair.
Well, can we look at it now?
There's a motion.
I got it right here.
There's a motion on the table right now to amend the, and Mr. O'Connor, can you repeat your motion, it's been some times, to make sure that we're all clear on what you're asking?
My motion is to amend the agenda to include a discussion item prior to the action items for review and discussion of the potential election scenarios as required from the, or requested from the ad hoc policy committee, which have been included in the packet.
So you, let me just shrink it, just so I can make sure I understand.
Want you to throw a discussion item on the...
You want to discuss the six, the chart figure?
Potential options.
And you want to do that in, in front of action items?
In front of action items, as it would, would seem most appropriate to do, to have that discussion prior to a second or first reading of said action items.
And what do we do with the action items with this unknown?
As I indicated previously.
In your motion? I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear.
I guess we can just leave the action items as is for now. If at that moment in time, we'd like to table them, we can. If not, we can have a second reading.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure whoever supported, still supports, just one moment, please. Who supported it originally? You did, okay. So are you in support of...
We haven't ended discussion regarding the motion.
I'm not, I'm not trying to end it, I'm just trying to make sure, bringing clarity again, so that we don't have a repeat of what transpired last time. So you're supporting that, the motion is on the floor, we've had some deliberations, do we want to continue deliberating, or do we want to set the vote?
Call the question.
I make questions.
I just want to make.
What was that?
Call the question.
Okay.
No.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Randalls.
Yes.
Ross.
I gotta admit, I have no idea what we're calling the question.
So, the motion, the motion is, is to add the chart with the six, six-year and four-year term option, you guys are familiar with that, the color-coded chart, as an act, as a discussion item, and also move the discussion item in front of the action item on the agenda.
Okay.
And keep the action item as listed on the agenda, and if we get to that point, I think Mr. O'Connor said, then we can discuss what to do with those action items. Can I make one more observation? I think we have, we're calling the roll now.
So just to paraphrase, make sure I'm clear, just determining whether we want to discuss what the ad hoc committee prepared.
Yes, sir.
Yes, in advance of the action items, okay. That was Ross, he said yes. Sorry, he just...
Slade.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Faub.
Yes.
Geetson, yes. President Lanier.
No. So we have an agenda. Lord have mercy. Celebration Superintendent Neal.
President Lanier and members of the board, I'd like to ask Julie Davis, I'm not sure where she is, Julie Davis, to come up. We have a donation from MSU Alumni Club.
Good evening, President Lanier, members of the board, Superintendent Weatheron Neal. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Dr. Arthur Garner, Principal of Westwood Middle School, along with Mrs. Susan Hartwell from the Student Advancement Foundation, to come up and speak about the MSU Alumni Club, who has raised funds to purchase some materials for students at Westwood Middle School.
Thank you. Susan, you're becoming a regular.
Thank you, board members. It's nice to be here.
We're gonna get you a name tag.
We'll have an election at some point. I don't know how long it'll be, but you're welcome to join us up here.
It's great.
Well, it is really a delight just to be here to introduce a celebration. And it is in connection with the MSU Alumni Club of West Michigan. And I wanted to introduce it because I want you to know a little bit of the history. We're here celebrating a donation from the club, but the club has been actively involved with the Student Advancement Foundation for, I want to say, six years, anyway, in supporting the youth and the programs at Sibley. Through our library campaign that you know about, that we started a long, long time ago, they did the library at Sibley, the club did. They've been maintaining the libraries, supporting all of the enrichment trips for the, for the youth at Sibley, all of these years, been an amazing partner. And just a few months ago, President Mike Poggi contacted me and said, you know, the club wants to do more. So we started talking about maybe another partnership, so to speak, and it seemed logical to kind of keep that bond with those students, many of those students who had been at Sibley, who would now be at Westwood Middle School. And so that was the point in time when I just could do that little introduction of the club members to Dr. Garner. So I would like to introduce to you President Mike Poggi of the MSU Alumni Club of West Michigan, who will be coming up here, also Mike Hughes from the club, and Adam Rogulsky, who are here. And I'm going to give my seat up, since I just did that little match and the rest they made happen, to Mike Poggi.
Thank you, it's an honor to be here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. And just to be clear, I'm now the past president. And my friend Mike Hughes over here is now our president. You have to name Mike to be president. All right, so...
Can your middle name be Mike?
Sure. We accept MSU alumni and friends, Reverend. Susan introduced our club to Dr. Garner at Westwood Middle, and we met together and talked about how we could best assist Westwood Middle. And, and after a nice conversation, it was determined that the students there could use some e-readers called NOOCs. And so we're making a donation, an amount of $7,150 towards the purchase of NOOCs. And we raised this money through what we call our Spartan Winter Tailgate, that occurred this February, and when we had our head football coach, Antonio, come, and we had a full room at the JAB Marriott, and we partnered with Grand Rapids Public Schools to do this, and we're honored to do that. So we'd like to give this donation to you, Dr. Garner, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to be quiet, because folks know when I get a mic, I start talking.
And crying, and crying.
Nobody's supposed to know that.
No one's supposed to know that, so now it's on record. Susan was very humble in her approach to helping out our students, and she was very gracious in helping us form this partnership. As we continue to strive to move student achievement at Westwood, one of the things that we wanted to do is support students through technology, but it also, also empowers our teachers to use different devices to help our students, particularly in social studies and science. And one way, one idea from the staff was really to create a NOOC lab so that students can differentiate their instruction as teachers deliver it to them, that sometimes they can go outside of the textbook and find other resources to help support what goes on to the classroom. We are building a NOOC lab in our media center to support those students, not just from Sibley, but for all the students that feed into Westwood, and help us as a staff, help our students, as they encourage them to read, starting from Sibley all the way through their graduation year. So I'm looking forward to being able to help our teachers develop a plan to help make sure that our students are utilizing the technology that we have at Westwood. So I appreciate it, and thank you, board, and thank you also to MSU Alumni Club for being so supportive of Grand Rapids Public School and Westwood and our children. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
I need to say something, because I usually hear board, my colleagues here talk about other places called Bulldogs or somebody, but I, myself, an alumni of Michigan State University.
Conveniently in green.
I, myself, a alumni of the University of Michigan. Thank you immensely.
Somebody always has to spoil.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Any other words from the other two gentlemen? None? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mikes.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All righty, next we have our student representative.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm glad to be back. This week I talked to some of my peers about the changes that Ms. Neal has made. Many people, including me, feel that she's doing a good job. When you made the changes in the GRPS school system, the building made a big change in the way things were run. Students aren't doing the things that they did before. Overall, what have you, what you've done has helped our school a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, board agenda items? I didn't get any cards for board agenda items. Any other? There being none? Report, secretary's report? Got anything?
No report.
No? Superintendent's report?
Actually, I have a few, but if we start with the, I want to start with the donation from Ken. And Ken Scott?
I'd like to introduce Bob McGraw and Dan Trials of King Scott Associates, who are the architects for Cesar I. Chavez Elementary. LEED buildings, there are certain tax incentives available for LEED buildings, and King Scott is here to share some of that tonight.
Hey.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
It's good to be here. I guess it's a night for celebrations and donations, and we'll have to get the U of M Alumni Club going on a similar program.
Exactly, we need a petition now.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. The EPAC program is a tax incentive program offered by the federal government to encourage developers and building owners to incorporate energy-efficient features in their building projects. And the district, Grand Rapids Public Schools, has had a long commitment to energy-efficient design, exemplified by the LEED program, and you've incorporated many energy-efficient building, features into your buildings over the last number of years on your building projects, so we commend you for that. The program is set up so that it's a tax incentive, and since Grand Rapids Public Schools is not a taxpaying entity, the, the program allows that benefit to go to the architect that designed the building. But since we're a designer of, of public education facilities, we've, we've been committed to public school education design for over 50 years, we think that benefit should go to the district, not to our firm. So we'd like to present you with a check for $21,000. Fantastic, Superintendent Neal, and more president than here.
I want you to walk in at the bank with that thing. See what they do.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with you and help you put more, more educational dollars in the classroom and for energy-efficient buildings and better operational improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a real check.
Theresa.
You didn't go to the treasure after.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Wendy can take that home.
We will put that money to good use. Thank you very much. I also want to share, and I will do this one rather than having Julie come up twice, but we received a donation from the West Michigan Asian Association for $5,000, and I don't want that to go unrecognized for library books. And we received the check a while ago, about three weeks ago, and it just went through finance. So I do want to go on record that we really appreciate that, and that will also go to good use. We will buy library books for kindergarten through 12th, and give something to all of our schools. So just you know. I have two more reports, and this next one is the Grand Rapids Symphony, and I have Dale and Claire and others to present. Come on, Claire. We can get more chairs, we can do that.
No, I'm bouncing the back.
Are you gonna, Dale's gonna move to the back, otherwise... Okay. We have another one, Mr. Ross is gonna bring around. We'll get it, yeah.
President Lanier, board members, Superintendent Neal, it is my pleasure to be back with you again. And it is, it definitely is a nice feeling, thank you.
Did you ever leave? That's really funny.
We're here tonight to talk about the proposed collaborative arts school, which is a collaboration between the art organizations and post-secondary institutions. It is an IB-infused art school project. We're in the midst of a feasibility study. I'd like to thank all of you for working with us, and Teresa for taking all of the time, because truly, the minute Teresa stepped into the job, the very first week, we were, we were talking about this, and I think that we've met four times. I really appreciate all of your help. Yes, and you may always call me at 7:30 in the morning.
Sorry, Dale.
Up for four hours right then.
So I'd like to introduce to my immediate right Claire Van Brandigan, who is the executive Director of Education with the Symphony, Claudia Walczakowski, who is the Director for Center for Educational Partnerships with Grand Valley State University, and Cindy Todd, who is the Program Chair for Art Education at Kendall College of Art and Design. And I'm really gonna turn this over to them, and they're gonna describe the project to you. Remember, we're in a feasibility study stage right now, which will end at the end of August.
I apparently just got a promotion, too, I'm very excited. I'll be getting new, new business cards, you have the old one, I put a packet at each of you.
As long as you get a new paycheck, it's fresh, the time is...
I think that's a lateral move, unfortunately. Really, thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. We're very excited about this project, and extremely pleased, and have enjoyed our work with Dr. Faub and certainly with Ms. Neal. And so I want to just go over a few things about how we got here today. his character, and started to pick his brain about what might be a really fantastic, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And what has evolved out of those early conversations is this idea of bringing together the arts community, pairing it with an IB program model, and to develop an international baccalaureate school of the arts. Not perhaps a traditional school of the arts that maybe we're all familiar with, but one that really builds on the data of over the last 30 years that supports the idea of a high-quality arts education to develop critical and creative skills needed for each and every one of our children, and not necessarily the next performing artist of tomorrow, but that a lot can really be learned and explored through the arts. With that, we have really come to understand that our arts community, while we often work in a lot of silos, is anxious and really enthusiastic about coming together into a partnership. We have indicated, received indicated interest from most of the large organizations in town that we've contacted, or everybody we contacted said yes. And it started, of course, with Superintendent Neal and her support of the feasibility phase, but we've also received letters of support for music from St. Cecilia's Music Society, from Opera Grand Rapids, and visual art from the Grand Rapids Art Museum, Kendall College of Art and Design, the Urban Institute for Contemporary Art, for dance with the Grand Rapids Ballet, the Hope College Department of Dance, and theater for the Civic Theater and Circle Theater. Additionally, Susan Hartwell with the Student Advancement Foundation has been sitting at the table with us as we've been pursuing this. And then we were delighted to welcome Grand Valley State University and Grand Rapids Community College as a part of this project as well, for a couple of things that we'll detail in a few moments. We are, as we've mentioned, in a feasibility phase to take a look to see whether or not this is a doable project for the arts community and as well as for the school district. As a part of that, we're partnering with LINK to launch a community feedback piece, which I believe is underway at the moment and should be completed by the end of the month. With that, I'd like to turn the table to Dr. Cindy Todd to talk a little bit about why arts education, integrated arts education, is critical for our students.
Thank you very much that we can come here and speak with you tonight, because this is an exciting project. She just named all of those arts organizations, and they're not only supporting this, they're at the table, and we have met a bajillion times, that's the technical number, I'm sure, and all of us just excited about this process and this project. The rationale for an arts-based school really begins in neuroscience, and I'm not going to insult you, but I'm going to give you the lesson, but I want you to know, I know many of you know this, I just wouldn't want one person at the table to not know it, and so forgive the lesson. But each one of us has in our head a brain, and it's two halves, and a large portion of your brain works on very logical functioning, such as math and text and all sorts of communication and all fact-based courses. However, there's a huge portion of your brain that is creative and endeavor, and if you look at how a typical school, and I'm talking typical across the United States, a typical school teaches math, science, English, and we push it, and we say we need more, and okay, you're not doing well, well, let's give you some more of that, and more of that, and more of that. And in reality, we are teaching to just the logical side of the brain. If we stick to all of those functions and we exercise, exercise, exercise our brain, we're only working with a small part. All the creative endeavors are done with an entirely different gray mass, that if we keep exercising this, this actually physically atrophies. You know, they've put electrodes to people's heads, and they've given them various tasks to do, and parts of your brain lights up. When you do those fact-based things, a very small and defined area of your brain is going to light up for that task, and it'll be a different area for each task, but it's a very small and defined area. This is where that fallacy comes around, that we only use one-tenth of our brain. Well, on those specific tasks, we only use a small portion of our brain at that moment. However, if you do a creative endeavor, so if you're giving a child an artistic problem to solve, and you put those electrodes on their head, the whole stinking brain lights up. I mean, it shoots like fireworks, and this has been done and charted. We have known these things for 30 years. So we keep giving our children small, specific tasks to do, even complicated algebraic problems, use that confined spot. But when we do the creative endeavors, it explodes with activity. And as we do these tasks that are logically based, none of the brain ever lights up in the creative hemisphere. None. They have done studies where they've stuck on these electrodes, and they've watched a child's brain, and they've actually bored them for an entire afternoon on purpose. And after the end of one afternoon, they measured the brain, and they could measure the atrophy that was done in one day, one afternoon. And then they tried to reverse the process with the same child, giving them creative and exciting things to do. It took four days to reverse the process of the one afternoon of atrophy. And we spend daily facts, 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 leaving one hemisphere of our brain chilling, doing nothing. That's a problem. That's a serious problem. So the educational experts have looked at this, and they've studied humans, and they've said several things. First of all, Howard Gardner said, "It's not if you're smart, it's how you're smart." And then he listed the list of ways you're smart, including music and visual and all sorts of things, including those left-brain activities that we're used to training up in school. Then we got Blooms Taxonomy, and I'm gonna guess that all of you have heard of Blooms. Blooms Taxonomy, just a few years ago, switched around the way they thought about education, and they talk about the lowest form of intelligence, which is just basic knowing. I say a fact, you repeat it back to me, and it moves all the way up its hierarchy to the most complicated, intensive brain function. And they have changed that from analysis and evaluate, and they've said it's create. They put create at the top of the pinnacle, the most higher, highest order of thinking that a person can possibly do. That's the art room. You learn facts, and you work problems, and you do things in all of the regular ed courses, but those arts-based courses, the music, the drama, the arts, is when create happens, at the top of the hierarchy, hierarchic thinking skills. Then we get to 21st century skills, right? If you look at 21st century skills, you've got a whole tenet on innovation, right? It's innovation, critical thinking, problem solving, collaboration, and communication. Now, that stuff happens in every single good classroom, right? If you've got a quality teacher, that stuff happens everywhere. However, it is the main function of the art room, that innovation, critical thinking, and problem solving are the very first three things every art teacher will tell you that they do daily. If the classroom teacher did that daily in their class, they'd be out of a job, because they wouldn't be doing their job, because they would not finish that stinking book. They would not have gone from plus one and two all the way up to algebra. They would not have covered the content. So they have to do their job in their classes, and the art classroom has to do their job in their class, and then we get the whole child. And the last fact I'll throw at you is, there was a study on jobs across the nation, and it was done during the George W. Bush years. Don't stop listening to it. Okay? And what they discovered at that time is that 10 out of every 30 children in every class across the United States, 10 out of every 30, goes into an arts-related career. Now, we've talked and talked and talked and talked and talked for years about leaving no child left behind, and now we're leaving one-third of our students behind, because that's what they're going to do for a living. When we chop out the arts, we lose teaching to those kids who are going to take that on as a career. And I will go further and say that the economic analysts of today are all saying that this trend is growing. This is where the jobs are going to be. Manufacturing is out. We need the design and creative endeavors to save the economic systems of the United States. And so those jobs are growing, and so we're going to have more of those students, and so we have to serve them. Now, in saying all of that, this school is going to be arts-based, so our focus is going to be on the arts. But the arts are going to be used to teach the other subjects, and they have found huge, huge things happen when you do that. In fact, there's a new, another new study, and I know you guys have seen these things, where, you know, kids in the arts are more likely to graduate, more likely to have a higher grade point average, or more likely to go to college, or more likely to finish college. I mean, I have a whole nother list of them here, of the same sorts of things. Arts-infused education makes a difference, because we're addressing the entire brain, not just the half we see is wanting. If we don't produce the tools to be able to process that learning, the kids are never going to be able to use the facts that they keep memorizing. So let's, this school is going to address that whole child.
Thank you, Cindy. And next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Claudia Walczakowski, who will talk about why IB in a lab school is of interest to Grand Valley State.
We are very excited to just be sitting at the table with all of these partners and being able to have the conversation. When you talked about art-infused curriculum, what we're talking about from the IB point of view is what does that curriculum look like? And this would be, IB is, I think you all received these things in your packets. These are sort of probably the easiest one, maybe it's because I like the picture of the kids, but it's, this has a nice kind of overview of what an IB primary year program looks like. And you don't hear as much about the primary years as you do the diploma programs. And what we're proposing or talking about is something that I think is really important for all children, and really something we're very interested in, is taking this art-infused curriculum and making sure that it has the six interdisciplinary sort of themes of the IB program that's here. They're sharing the planet, who we are, where are we in place and time, how do we express ourselves, how the world works, how we organize ourselves, but it also includes all the benchmarks, all the standards of the state and the common core. So by putting IB, you're not eliminating those. What you're talking about is a rigorous curriculum for elementary school. What we're really talking about is increasing rigor in the elementary level to give children the skills to succeed throughout their lifetime. You know, it's sort of, it's, well, you all know how it is if you're trying all of a sudden to learn how to study, and it's your first year in college, right? Or you're in ninth grade, or all of a sudden it gets tougher and you don't have those skills. What this does is, this is a curriculum that starts on the elementary level to give children the skills to succeed. And what we've found is that actually, there's research showing that children that are prepared by IB programs on the elementary level are more successful in middle school and in high school, and have a 69% college acceptance rate. Now, that's regardless of whether or not they go to a middle or a high school that's also IB. What you're talking about is giving them a good base for their entire education. And so that's the curriculum piece with the art focus that we're talking about. There's also been some research, a McKinsey study, that looked at low-income and minority students, and what they found is a powerful, at least I think a powerful effect, what they found is a higher percentage of these children achieve proficient and advanced performance levels on mathematics and science. They've also found that they perform better in state and national standardized tests, those score things, right? And although, for me, I'm interested in the excitement of learning, and I'm interested in them learning and succeeding, but we all know we have to do the standardized test. And so we want them not only successful, but we want them to be able to succeed and meet those standards and the common store standards. And this curriculum has shown that it's effective with standardized testing as well as lifelong learning. And also, an interesting other part is that they, graduates of these programs on a high school level tend to be more involved in their communities, because of the service learning and the community project pieces that are part of the entire K-12 IB programming. So it's, to me, it's giving them lifelong learning skills, not to mention global skills, that this is a curriculum in a global lifetime that we are living in, that will give our children, our students, the ability to succeed on that standard, and have the potential of taking the IB tests if you go all the way through the K-12 program. The research has also said that there are some components that make PYP critical sort of components that will make it success, and it says here, whole school immersion, which is something that we're proposing, that this isn't a class, or a classroom, or a particular teacher, that this is a school. Collaborative planning, which is the stage we're all at now, I mean, people are always going, saying, "Well, what's this like?" or "What's gonna..." We're not quite there yet, but we're working together, which is huge. Continuous training, and we'll talk a little bit about that, and I think that's part of the role that GVSU is very interested in. And also the availability of resources, community involvement, and school leadership support. And one of the things that makes me most excited is when I look at the critical elements to make this succeed, I think that we're all here on the table together to say, "Yeah, we have them," and want to partner together to make this happen. From a GVSU, the College of Education has adopted a core value on social responsibility. And so my role is to create educational partnerships to foster that. And so what we're really interested in is being really integral partners with the community that we're in. We're right there downtown in the river, and we want to be there and work with our community. So that's very important to us. The other part is that the research also has shown that this high level of adult interpersonal support in these schools have made nearly a year and a half difference in reading, and a year and two-thirds difference in mathematics compared to students who don't have that level of adult interpersonal support. So that we think that one of the things that we can offer by the idea of working, we're using the word lab school, but it's not in the traditional old lab school where you create a school and you bring, you know, children in, it's more our coming out to the community, is that we can offer the resources of more adults to support faculty and support students within the school. So what we're talking about is offering resources to support the students and teachers in a rigorous academic curriculum. And that's really important to us, and it's important for our students as, you know, new teachers, to be able to have that experience and also those values. So we see it as a wonderful partnership where we can be involved in rigorous curriculum, staff development. We're beginning the process to be able to provide professional development and teacher certification in IB. And so that will offer that training here in the region, which will make it even more feasible for Grand Rapids Public and for other partners to be able to work with this curriculum. So we're interested in partnering with Grand Rapids Public, with the arts community, and we're actually very excited about the whole possibility.
Claudia?
Anything else you'd like to present before I open the floor for the Board to ask questions?
I do just have one additional statement that was sent in by one of your former students, just to give a perspective on what this could be for real-life students. Dear Superintendent Neal and Board members, I've been asked by Dale Hovenkamp, my former principal, when I attended City High Middle, to write a short statement regarding my experience in the international baccalaureate...
So we're interested in partnering with Grand Rapids Public, with the arts community, and we're actually very excited about the whole possibility.
Claudia?
Anything else you'd like to present before I open the floor for the board to ask questions?
I do just have one additional statement that was sent in by one of your former students, just to give a perspective on what this could be for real-life students. Dear Superintendent Neal and Board members, I've been asked by Dale Hovenkamp, my former principal, when I attended City High Middle, to write a short statement regarding my experience in the International Baccalaureate Program and why it would be a good investment for Grand Rapids' future. I'll start off with some background about myself. I've lived in Grand Rapids almost all my entire life. I attended Burton Elementary until fifth grade, went to Blanford, and then hopped off to City High. In early 2009, I was selected to attend an international boarding school in Wales on a full scholarship with other politically and socially aware teenagers from all over the world for my last two years of high school. Since the school drew students from across the globe, a curriculum that didn't favor any one national tradition was absolutely necessary for our academic success. It is in this environment that I experienced the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program and grew to love it. I am now a freshman at Vassar College in upstate New York with a major in International Studies and a minor in Arabic Language and Culture. Similarly, Grand Rapids is a very different city filled with families from all parts of the globe. The International Baccalaureate Program helps foster global thinking on a local level. The coursework is largely focused on a macro level while individual actions, such as the CAS, which is the Community Action Service Project, primarily progress on a micro level. Students examine and analyze global issues while looking at how international acts affect their daily lives. The IB program gives students the tools to be competitive in the global economy, a quality that is all the more important as our world gradually becomes smaller. As a freshman in college, I had a noticeable leg up over many of my peers in the first few weeks. I had written many near-college-level essays as coursework in high school. Maintaining a narrative over several thousand words didn't seem as daunting after completing my extended essay. As such, the IB is very challenging, but the workload is manageable, and I'm confident that GRPS students will be able to handle the work, especially if they start with the primary years program, and there is a very strong support network. After all, I am a product of Grand Rapids Public Schools, and I was able to complete the IB with some success. Students are held to the highest standard, and they're compared to their peers all over the world, especially in the diploma program. Early on, students learn what it's like to interact in foreign tongues and to interact with teenagers from all over the world. Now, more than ever, students are expected to be culturally literate and to be aware of what's happening around them. The IB inspires students to take action and to try to affect real change in their communities. Independent thought is cherished above all else, and I can think of few concepts better to encapsulate this program. IB students are given the tools to be leaders in their communities and beyond. It is impossible to fully encompass the IB program in just one short message, so if anyone on this board has any questions or concerns about the International Baccalaureate Program, please feel free to contact me. I truly think that IB is a revolutionary program, and I would be excited to see a second IB program in GRPS. Sincerely, Saul Duola.
The email is just, is in the letter, just in case. That's great. Questions, comments? Ms. Miesem.
Yeah, I have a child in the IB program. I also have a child in Montessori, so a lot of those primary year attributes you were talking about are very similar. So that really resonates with me personally. What I would like to challenge you all with, as a board member that needs to have programs that are sustainable for all of our children, is that you focus on scalability and sustainability. Don't make this a program just for 250 kids. We have 18,000 kids we need to serve, so think about scalability and sustainability, and I'll be with you all the way.
Great. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I'd like to know, just a couple of questions. One is the feasibility phase and what it is, and then how long it will take. And then, secondly, what you're going to, what you need from us now, and then what you expect to need from us after the feasibility is done, if you know.
So what we're doing right now is we're, we would like to work with you to draft some, what we're calling feasibility scenarios, what this could look like. There are, I'm sure, a myriad of options, certainly to include scalability and sustainability as part of that. But all of our organizations need to be able to make a determination on whether or not this is feasible for every one of our organizations, and that includes yourselves. So what we're asking is that we have partners with you in this to sit down at the table and draft what those feasibility scenarios could look like, so that come the end of August, we can all make informed decisions about whether or not this project can move forward.
And how long was the, did I hear August or?
Yes, August is when it's completed, yeah.
So, so a series of sessions with the district staff to see what these scenarios would look like and whether or not they're feasible, and then in August to take action on pursuing one or, okay.
Dr. Paul?
Well, that wasn't my question, but I'll just, I'll just add, I, you know, how enthusiastic I am about this, but I, you know, I see an expansion of IB throughout the country, and in my own mind, I think it's in response to global awareness, but also in response to a kind of flattening that we've seen with the curriculum with No Child Left Behind. Well, we've seen incredible depth and rigor with literacy and numeracy, which is appreciated. It's a narrowing. And so I think that a lot of communities are recognizing that and grieving, you know, things that are lost or what could be, and IB provides a, you know, very vetted, established curriculum with protocol and procedures that keep it at the level it needs to be at to be good. And I, we've got a great IB program, but right now it's a test-in-school, and I feel passionate about offering this to all children, having all children to be an opportunity. But, you know, with its rigor, it needs to start early. But we know all children are hungry for this kind of learning and this kind of rigor. So it's great to see it at age three. And I hate to see, I hate to see it be just in the suburbs. I mean, it, you know, I want it here. I think another misnomer a lot of people have about the arts is that it, it isn't rigorous. And sometimes it isn't. Sometimes it's not done well. It's just, you know, fun time for kids, you know? But what we're talking about here is very rigorous, and it develops competencies. And so it's not just the one side of the brain, it's all of the brain that's being used. And, and on top of that, it's beautiful. And, you know, the big mantra in education right now is rigor and relevance, and that has both, because it becomes relevant for the child and who they are, and who they are in their community, and who they are with each other. And so I'm, I'm all over this, and I'm really excited about it.
That's it? Randalls?
That was a lot, no. I just wanted to make sure. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. I just wanted to add the, there's so much to say. Of course, I think it's fabulous, and I do have two kids at City. The piece about having the GVSU partnership, having the teacher and the teachers being taught here locally versus having to send people out for travel expenses is such a huge, and such a boon for West Michigan, will be having people come into West Michigan to get this training for their IB. So that is really, really humongous. The piece about, the students will be learning, and they'll have that advantage of having extra adults around, but then also the student teachers getting such a great experience that, that just is so great. I wanted to reiterate a bit about Jane talking about general, generalizing this, growing these partnerships, so that our 18,000 students can all benefit from this on different levels is, is really critical, and the funding piece, of course, is very important. But thank you so much, it was a very impressive presentation.
Ms. Slate?
I do, I have a couple of questions. It was a very good presentation, thank you. Are there, and if so, where are current models of this at elementary, primary level? Are there any? Or is this a pioneering venture?
There's only, it's primarily pioneering. There aren't any in the United States. There is one IB School of the Arts in Canada, the Victoria School, but there isn't anything in the United States, and there is nothing anywhere on the globe that partners with the professional arts community in this capacity.
Wow, the one in Canada is that, all early L, is it?
It's the primary years program.
And how long has that been there?
I'm not su, a few years, I believe. I don't, I don't know the exact details.
Kind of a technical question, class size? In order to pull this off, in order to do this work well?
I think the prescribed class sizes that are in place are manageable.
You could do a 25 to 30 to one? That's impressive.
At City, they have 40 to one.
Wow, that's very nice to know. One other challenge.
Well, no, it's not, really.
Pardon?
It's not nice to know.
As opposed to the charter, though, where we have a 1 to 16 or 1 to 20.
It's very difficult to maintain, you know, a 10 to one in our current situation.
Even kids at City get lost in those class sizes.
Oh, absolutely. It's not a perfect scenario.
That's right, yes.
It's important to grab those children when they're in the primary years. It may not be common right now, but it's, it's commonly known, known in neuroscience is that zero to 12, that you build those dendrites that are built by the arts that become such a tremendous tool for the children as they get older. Past age 12, it's like learning a language after age 12. It's much more difficult. And then literally your toolbox is so, has so few tools in them that it's hard to process the rest. So when the arts are not in the elementary school, it's a huge blow. It's, it's one of the six things that neuroscience says builds more dendrites. So it's, it's one of those things that we wanted to grab the elementary because that's the teachable moment. And there are lots of arts-infused schools that use, you know, use that, it's the IB, arts-based combination that's more rare.
There are PYP elementary schools, there are IB schools, but the combination is what makes it unique.
That's unique.
One, one further one challenge for you. Given, given my, my love of special ed kids, any opportunity for any of them?
Absolutely.
Promise?
Yes, yeah. In fact, there's a research report that showed that the IB curriculum helped the development and proficiency of special education, especially with learning disabilities.
Great, thank you.
And there's no intent of anyone at the table to make this exclusive. You don't audition to get in, you don't submit a portfolio. We want it to be a neighborhood school. That is, in fact, I would make sure I'm not overreaching, but the, the people who are funding and backing this initiative are very strongly opposed to making it a charter or exclusive.
Okay, great, that's good to hear, thank you.
Paul Sette? Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the partnership, and I'm really happy to hire at, I mean, Grand Valley, and of course, the Bulldogs that are here too.
The Spartans might be able to help.
No, it's just really, it's fantastic to see that partnership with, especially here in those institutions in the city, and it makes it more a part, partnership with, I mean with GRPS, so I'm really happy about that, so. Thank you. And of course, the symphony as well.
Reverend Hoskins, and then Mr. Ross, but Claire, I'd like for you two to kind of go through this, the scope of the project, because this meeting is televised, and so it would be great for the public to kind of hear a little bit about some of the details that you have in the, in the project.
You have our white pages in your packet, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me let those two go, and then if you can do that, that would be great. Reverend Hoskins?
You talked about no prerequisites to get in, or everybody's inclusive, but once they're in, the requirements to stay in, are there requirements to stay in, you know, the program? I mean, certain GPAs, you know?
I think that's something that has to be worked out. I don't know that we have an answer for that at the moment. There isn't typically, no. IB accepts kids at all points. I think that there are probably moments over the whole pre-K-12 spectrum where it makes more sense to enter than others. You wouldn't want to take a kid who has no experience and plop them in a diploma program and expect success. But, yeah.
But if they're not meeting certain IB requirements, then they wouldn't get the IB diploma, even if they're at that school.
But they would still be meeting the Michigan standards and being able to progress through K-10, Common Core, those type of things.
At the elementary level, it's much more of a philosophy than it is by this grade level, you have to be doing X, Y, and Z. It's much more of an educational philosophy at that elementary level.
And I did notice that expectation of parents is to be involved.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I hold that pretty strongly.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We know that the parents are a key component of the stool, if you will, to make sure that kids are succeeding, along with supportive staff and leadership, so.
Is that it, Mr. Hoskins? Reverend, Reverend Hoskins, Mr. Ross, sorry.
Just from a Grand Valley perspective, just to be clear, at this point, Grand Valley isn't doing anything in regards to IB education for teachers, or they are, I'm just curious.
They are not. We're in the process of, I mean, other than educating students about IB, we're not doing professional development about IB. Becoming a place where we can have certification or offer certification is an 18-month process. And currently, our application to start that process goes in this fall. We are, so at this point, we are, actually, June 7th, there will be somebody coming from the National Office of IB here, so that all the partners can meet and talk and learn more and have sort of the same language and the start of the framework for IB. So yes, we're providing it, but we're not as individual faculty or staff providing it. We're bringing it in and offering it as an opportunity for people.
We've extended that informational session to you as well. Hopefully, you've received your invitation in the mail to attend that event, and we strongly encourage you to do so.
And secondly, Pastor Hoskins mentioned something that's pretty important to me, that parental involvement piece. I'm curious to know what sort of, I guess, not necessarily expectations you have on parents, but how do you plan to, I guess, enforce those expectations? Or maybe early for that question, but.
It's a bit early for that question. I think that the arts make a great entree for parents who have, have felt disenfranchised in their own educational experience. And I think that there are a lot of ways that parents can be involved that aren't putting a lot of pressure on them to reproduce skills that they may or may not feel comfortable with. So I think that there's a tremendous number of opportunities around this for parent involvement.
So at the end of the day, it's a desire and expectation, but by no means, I guess, even though I would like it to be a mandate, of course, you're not positioned for it to be one, though.
People's circumstances may not allow it.
Okay, Claire, if you could just kind of go through a couple, just a couple of the highlights.
Sure, sure, sure. So what we've proposed is a collaborative project between the arts community and GRPS that significantly improves student achievement and graduation rates through the implementation of an international baccalaureate program in combination with an intensive art curriculum, and then pairing that with an after-school program that will be developed and implemented by the arts community. And we would propose to start with an elementary school program, pre-K, starting at age three through grade five, with the intent of scrolling up a year to track with the fifth graders each year as they advance, so that by the time they are in 12th grade, we have fully implemented the diploma program at that point. So it's an aggressive schedule. And, but I, I think, you know, great rewards come from hard work. So we're more than willing to be a partner in this process. This isn't a project that we're dumping on anybody's lap and waving goodbye and say good luck. So we fully intend to be fully involved. I, I think that's kind of a brief overview. You have a lot of the detail here, and certainly you have my old business card there, so feel free to give me a call at any time.
Can you just write executive in there?
Yeah, just please do.
Just add executive in there. We have one more question. Mr. O'Connor?
Just one quick question. I assume part of the feasibility study will to, will be to establish additional, any costs associated with it.
Yeah, absolutely, to know what that is. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So as a board, we talked briefly about our next steps and where we would want this information, how we would want this information to come back after the feasibility study. And, you know, I think we were talking a little bit about the Ed Committee, having that come through the Ed Committee, and then recommend it from the Ed Committee to the full board. So I'm assuming that that's certainly after August, so we have a little bit of time, but just to kind of reiterate what we had discussed a couple of weeks ago, and we briefly discussed this, that that would be the process when you guys come back. So that's really for you and your staff and your benefit.
Any other questions, comments?
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I have one more report.
Oh, I forgot, I almost went to the next.
Before you move on, I have one more report, and I'm going to ask Julie Davis and Melanie to come up. Come on, Melanie. To come up and give a brief presentation on the budget.
As presented during our work session, we thought it'd be a good idea to share this with our community. It's our first look at our budget for 2012, 2013. But before we go forward, we thought we'd take a quick snapshot of where we've been in our history. And over the past 10 years, we have faced several reforms, cuts, school closures, and consolidations, over $73 million in budget reductions. We've eliminated programming, restructured, reduced, including things like our career in technical education, elementary art, music, and PE, some counseling services. Our employees have increased their contribution towards healthcare. We've privatized, we've closed 20-plus buildings and programs, and we've seen our enrollment decline from 25,600 to approximately 18,000 out, or 18,000 students today, excuse me. Lot of activity going on in Lansing centered around public education, or what we call Lot of activity going on in Lansing centered around public education, or what we call our teacher tenure and performance evaluation systems have been passed. The executive budget version, along with the House and the Senate, have done various things to our small class size grant. We've seen a MIPSers reform Senate bill come out, Senate Bill 1040, with significant changes in the retirement system. We have changes, potential changes in our special ed itinerant lapse funds that we receive, best practices, and performance-based payments. Best practices, the Senate budget version has eliminated that, excuse me, and has recommended that be rolled into the foundation allowance. The executive budget proposal keeps that in, and it has it at $75 per pupil. We are currently receiving $100 per pupil for best practices. You must meet five of the six criteria that are listed on the screen. The House budget proposal keeps it at $75 per pupil. They've added a couple more options, and you must meet six of eight. Our current year update through our budget amendment two, we're projecting our budget fund balance to be at $13 million, or a little over $13 million, roughly eight and a quarter percent. We are currently in the process of working on a final budget amendment that we will bring to you in June. We received notice in middle of March that we have additional adjunct jobs funding. We received notice at the end of April that we have an increase to our Medicaid fee for service reimbursement. We'll be looking to do a couple, several of the other things that are listed on this screen, eliminating our capital projects transfer for the current year due to the passing of our warm, safe, and dry funds. We eliminated for the second semester the two-day rotation at our high schools. We're acknowledging an increase in our health insurance savings, a decrease in our cost of our utilities due to the warmer winter. And then at the end of the year, we know we always have a variance between our budget, and we're just acknowledging that right here, so that we're not saying the sky is falling. We know we're going to be a little bit better in our budget. Leaving us with a projected ending fund balance of $18.7 million at this point. It's just a quick snapshot. We certainly will have that number a little bit more finalized for you at our third budget amendment. That $18.7 million represents 11 and 3/4 percent. Moving forward to 12, 13, what we're presenting for you here are two scenarios, a best and a worst case, and we know that we'll land somewhere in the middle, because the three versions of the budget that have been proposed are different. We are projecting an enrollment decline in the best-case scenario, 400, and the worst-case scenario, 600. We know that River City Scholars is opening up in our neighborhood, along with the Charter Academy that will be by Marvin Sap. We do know that the cap has been lifted as well for the cyber school, so we're anxiously waiting to see how that will really impact us. We also know that our federal adjunct jobs money is going away for next year. In the MIPSers offset line, what that reflects is the House version. The House version provides for us 196 per pupil. We're currently receiving 122. And then, as stated earlier, the best practices funding, it's currently $100 per pupil, and we would go down to $75 per pupil. We're also looking at changes on our expense side moving forward to next year. We had a one-time textbook order that was for elementary reading series, so we will not incur that expense again in 12, 13. The kindergarten funding changed, the all-day, to receive the full foundation funding. If that continues to hold through, it will cost us about $3.3 million. As you're aware, we use our Title I money to extend our day and run our all-day K kindergarten programs this year. The retirement rate increased, depending on what happens with Senate Bill 1040. It could hold our retirement rate, it could reduce it. If it stands the way the three versions of the budget proposed, it could cost us approximately $2.9 million, moving the rate from 24.46 to 27.32. Our settled contracts for next year, we'll see a health insurance employee contribution increase, and we're expecting that to save us about $500,000. And then due to the projected enrollment decline, we do anticipate a need for position reductions in both the best and the worst-case scenarios. This screen is just a summary of the last couple of slides that we've seen, so that you can see, is it this? A best and a worst-case scenario, the 18.7, where we think we may land at the end of this fiscal year, and then the projected ending fund balance at the bottom there is our best and worst-case scenario for ending June 30, 2013, without any changes. Our fund balance policy currently stands that we will have the goal of an unreserved fund balance of 10%, plus or minus 5%. And so then we thought what we would do is provide for you just a picture in dollars of each percentage point about what that would equate to. We have several administrative recommendations for budget changes for 12, 13. Again, continuing the capital projects transfer elimination while we are under the warm, safe and dry projects, excuse me. We're recommending a one-time transfer from our GRAS program to restructure our student support rooms, central office position reductions, department non-salary reductions, restructuring our security services, reducing our legal services. Those are all savings and increases to our fund balance, increasing our elementary and art, elementary art and music, which would be a reduction of our fund balance, and the full-year elimination of our two-day rotation, which is also a decrease in our fund balance. Bringing us to a projected ending fund balance of $10.6 million, or 2.1 in the worst-case scenario, again, knowing we're going to land somewhere in the middle. Where do our dollars go at the end of June 30, 2011, 2010? You can see where we spend our resources between instruction and support, and instruction and support includes our direct instruction. You can see that on the screen, principals, secretaries, counselors, some of our ancillary staff, our school custodians, and our school improvement, and the other district expenses includes the business office, superintendent, human resources, community relations, purchasing, et cetera. Major grant overview, the district receives well over $45 million in grants each year. So what you have on the screen before you is some of our major ones that we thought we'd highlight, list the type as far as if they're from the state, if they're from the federal government, if it's a formula grant, which is usually based on a specific student count, or if it's a competitive grant and that we had to apply for it and be awarded that money. The purpose of each of those funds, and then our proposed budget amount for 12, 13. And then finally, our next steps in our budget work that we'll be proceeding on is we'll have another work session scheduled for May 14th. We'll be doing some additional budget work, identifying other areas that we need to address. We'll come back to the full board on May 21st, provide an update. May 29th, in the morning, 8 o'clock, we have our finance committee meeting. We'll be presenting the budget, how it has to be legally adopted by the board. Somewhere in there that we're going to hold a budget hearing, it's a requirement, and we will have that posted, so that the community is aware and are able to attend. And then finally, on June 4th, we'll be presenting the full board, the budget for adoption.
I apologize for that screen jumping. We'll take care of that the next time. It gives me a migraine, yeah. Jumping around like that. And Sam was not able to fix it, but we'll take care of that next time.
I think your bulb was going.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that. Any questions, comments for Julie? I know we just went through a work session where we talked about this there, but what questions would we have for now, for Julie?
Does that include that $21,000 check?
The big one over there, it does match.
Another budget amendment.
Superintendent, it's the real check. Any other questions, comments?
I am curious to know, I know from where this River City Charter is stationed, I know that we have some year-round schools in that area, and I'm curious to know, and Julie, you probably can't answer this, though, I don't know, but I'm curious to know what the enrollment is at those schools. I know Campus is one. What are the others in that area?
Dickinson?
Dickinson.
Campol, Campus, Dickinson. It could impact Brookside and Mulick.
And the ones that are year-round, though, are what?
Campus, Campol, Dickinson.
In the area of that school, there's others as well.
And so, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I said, I was just, you know, beginning to speculate on the potential impact of year-round calendar, and potentially whether that helps or hurts us as far as some student retention. And, you know, just was curious on what sort of exploration we could have with maybe teachers whomever, and really more aggressively discussing whether that's going to have a negative impact on the district or not, and on students and stuff in general. So that's why I asked, just curious.
Any other questions, comments?
There being none, thank you, Julie. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie and Julie. That's it. I apologize. The staff is harassing me because I gave them a five-minute rule. They said I went over my five-minute rule. I apologize to Cabinet.
That was John, he was harassing you.
Well, they're texting each other about me breaking my own rules.
Accountability everywhere.
He looks guilty. I apologize. There's a lot of information. That's okay, it was all good stuff, so.
Okay, so in our amended agenda, we have added discussion items, and we've moved it above the action items, so our discussion items will be of the chart that the ad hoc policy committee created for us with the, is it five or six options, John?
Five.
Five options regarding the six-year, and I think there's one four-year term cycle on there. So it's the discussion, it's a discussion item, so there's no need for a motion to discuss it. Any questions, comments, feedback?
Just that the, the policy committee went through and looked at potential scenarios in which to facilitate a transition to six-year terms on an even three-year rotation, three per, yep. Just for.
Thank you.
Don't look.
For public consumption.
See what we're talking about.
So the first four options are the four scenarios that could facilitate a transition to six-year terms with an even rotation. The option five is a four-year, four-year term rotation, so.
So as we mention any option as we're talking, are you going to stay there, Julie? And then you can just scroll back and forth.
I just thought it'd be easier for people that know what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's really good. So, questions?
Do you want to, can you do a quick overview?
Yeah, option one would basically require that in 2012, there would be two four-year terms, which would then transition to six-year terms in subsequent elections. The second election, which would be 2014, when there would be five board members up for election, would require three six-year terms and two four-year terms, which would then have to be followed after that with the four-year terms, one being split into a four-year term, one being split into a six-year term. It's very, very confusing. I think my biggest fear regarding any of the six-year options is it takes time to get there. The soonest is about 2018, when you could have everyone on a, on a six-year cycle. There would still be some overlapping terms falling after that regardless of option. And I just think it's important that we consider the impact to the voter, regardless of the decision that we make. Democracy shouldn't be difficult. Democracy should be easy. People should have, you know, we are the, I don't want to, for lack of a better term, we're the lone men on the totem pole when it comes to any elected office in this, in this community. We're, you know, we're as local as it gets. We're the purest form of democracy. And having, having confusion at our level is not convenient. It's difficult enough to get people to engage in the education process and to be up to speed on what's going on regarding their school district. I mean, as evidenced by previous elections, when we were the only thing on the ballot, we're lucky to get 10% of the electorate to come out. Now there's going to be, it's a November even year election, so 50% of the population may be voting in that election, but will they understand what they're voting for? Will they understand why they're having a four-year term for two people and a six-year term for other people? You know, after completing this chart, I put it out to people all throughout, emailed a ton of people that I know, both parents, teachers, elected officials, former elected officials, neighborhood leaders, people that run nonprofits, and just wanted their feedback, regardless of what it was. I just wanted to know what, what they thought about it, because ultimately, they're the people that are, you know, they're our bosses at the end of the day. And what they thought was best. And the overwhelming response from the community was, they thought four years was a better option for GRPS. They thought it gave them more accountability, more control, and enabled them to say, yes, you're doing a good job, or no, you're not doing a good job, and they can have an impact in a subsequent election over that body. That's all I got for now.
So you were going to go through each option, were you going to?
It's very different, you're going to all be really confused if I just start.
Yeah, it's just the same thing, but each.
Yeah, the first option just starts with four-year terms and then splits the next five elections into six and four. The next option is two six-year terms for the subsequent election, and then splits the next option to four and six-year terms with the following elections having to be split again. The option three requires the next, the upcoming election to be one four-year term and one six-year term. The election after that will be three six-year terms and two four-year terms. Option four is two six-year terms, and it would actually require an eight-year term for somebody in the following election.
You nominated me.
I think, Mr. Ross, if, you'd want that one, wouldn't you?
That would be you.
And the final option is just, if four years, it requires no, no real changes. We don't have to file anything, we just have to amend our bylaws to reflect that our organizational meetings are in January.
Dr. Baker?
Yeah, John, in terms of, actually, I'm trying to figure out which, which one gets us to all six-year terms fastest.
Either option three or option four would get us there.
Option three is, everybody would either be on a six-year term or being voted for, but it would require.
In 2016, you would have three six-year terms. And then in 2018, you would have the subsequent six-year terms. So that would be.
One four-year, but that requires one four-year election this fall, and then one six-year election this fall.
Every time you move your hand.
And then 2014, there would be three six-year and two four-year, and from then on, it would be 2018. So the other thing is, is that will this require, can we vote on these term lengths all at once? Can we vote to implement a full option now, or do we have to vote then?
We would, we would have to file an election.
You don't vote, we file it, yeah.
With the state of Michigan. However, we would have to change, there would have to be some additional language drafted for our bylaws that explains the entire situation, which would then have to be voted on subsequently, by a subsequent incarnation of this body, to then amend the length of those terms again.
So we would have to, so we would vote on what, the beginning point?
We would vote on what?
Later boards to vote to continue with the plan.
No, I don't think they would have to vote. It would just be outlined in there for them to know how to move forward with the plan, right?
I believe we have to, because our bylaws read, just one second.
After our initial vote, I don't think that there are any subsequent votes.
No, I think that they would have to, just one second, I have it up.
Okay.
How has that been done in the past? Because this isn't, the terms are new, they're longer, but we've had people that have ran for. but we've had people that have ran for different terms of office lengthwise before.
But that's a, but that's a one-time, that was a one-time change.
Well, that was just, I'm.
What do you mean, like by completing, completing terms?
You're speaking probably just with Sunita and Tony, but we've had it in the past prior to that also. I don't know if it was a one-time or if it was a couple of years consecutive, but I know we've done it in the past.
That was, I think, I think, well, based on the information that I've researched, I think those have all been connected with completing terms that were vacated, seats that were vacated and completing those terms.
Mrs. Muller did it and Lisa Hinko did it.
Oh, when you, when, when the election law happened, well, you would probably be the best one.
There were different, they had, I think, two-year terms and we had three-year terms.
But did it, it just happened? It was just extended.
I don't know if it was one year, two years. I'm just saying it's happened before.
I believe those, those were one-time, one.
Extinctions.
Right, because our.
Because it was annual elections at that time, which is different than every other year elections. Yeah, they were just extending.
It's worth looking at. Everybody's saying, yeah, but I don't think we really know.
No, I'm, I'm.
That'll be your assignment, though, Kenny, because I think, I think you'd probably be the better person to know where to pinpoint around when that occurred.
Bylaw 1030 reads, "The board is composed of nine members serving four-year terms and elected at an election held in accordance with Michigan compiled laws, blah, blah, blah." So, it would require us to say that we were going to have this term for this length, this term for this length. And then, it would only last for this incarnation of the body because the subsequent body would have to go in and then say, seats, this seat and this seat would have to shift back from a four-year term to a six-year term. You get what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
Our, our, our bylaw just says, "We're composed of nine members with four-year terms." We're going to have to spell it all out in the bylaws that you're going to be a four-year term and you're going to be a six-year term. And then, at some point, someone's going to have to change the bylaws to read.
Oh, at the end of, at 2016, 2018 or whatever.
Somebody's going to have to change the bylaw to get back to.
Nine, which six-year terms. Okay, yeah, okay.
Or you can raise.
So, it would require a subsequent board.
Once you get through that whole cycle.
So, to get to this, it would require a subsequent board voting on the plan that we would vote for now.
Well, they, they wouldn't vote on the plan. They would have to vote to write.
They'd have to vote to change.
Have to make sure their bylaws are actually reflecting where they are at that time, which at that point, they would be a body of nine with six. So, there wouldn't be a vote on the plan as much as it will be correcting the bylaws at that point once you get through the cycle.
Right, but they would, well, we would vote on, we would end up changing our policy language that would reflect, for instance, that we'd have in this fall, one four-year term and one six-year term. We would expect a subsequent board to then change Board Member One from a four-year term to a six-year term. We would, we would actually, we would just lay a plan out that would have to be spelled out.
And in the minutes would be official enough for that.
In the minutes, but it was, it would also have to be in our bylaw how we.
Got to this point.
How we got to this point. And then, at the end, then it's just going to have to be.
Switching the language to read just like it's reading now, but nine-member bodies, six-year terms as opposed to four.
I do have a question.
Now? Is that it, Tony, for you?
Yeah, John, just, if we could just change our bylaws. Do we have to do anything more with county clerk, city clerk, state, whatever, as this changes? Or do we just put it in our bylaws and?
I believe we have to file an election plan with the Secretary of State.
Just one time? Yep.
Okay.
By July 27th.
Yep.
Okay, but not, not as we change these?
Right, not every single election.
This is just one time, it's an election.
Thanks.
I will say that after our last meeting, some of the concerns that were brought up were concerns, you know, were pretty legitimate concerns, you know, where would we get candidates who would be interested in six years? You know, would people vacate and we have to appoint constantly? And so, I did talk with members of staff as well as board members of bodies who have six-year terms, just to kind of get some feedback. You know, we walk into, you know, even, you know, bigger mess than it will be to go through the cycles. And the feedback was actually pretty positive. I actually was reassured with the Community Colleges Trustee Board, they have been on six-year terms over 20 years. And I think the, another concern was that would incumbents run after you've already, you know, committed to six years? Would you be interested in doing that again? And they've shared that they do have incumbents run, that every election cycle, they do have people running against the incumbents. I think that was the other thing, whether people would be interested, that their boards were made up of a diverse group of people, you know, professionally. I think that was another concern, who would we get and what would the quality be? So, that was from the Community College. The Library Commission, the City Library Commission, they had the same thing. The Community College actually never had to make an appointment because they've never had a member resign. So, that was, you know, you didn't have people getting in and resigning at the Library Commission. They, they have had resignations and kind of, it sounded kind of similar to the board, the school board, where every five years or so, someone would then resign from their six-year terms, and they had been doing it for a significant amount of time. The ISD, they also have a six-year board, and there's this pretty low key, so I don't know that we would necessarily want to use their information because they really didn't have a whole lot of candidates running for their board. It's pretty low key, but their incumbents did run multiple times and things of that nature. So, I was, but they also did have a diverse board as well as the Library Commission. So, that kind of gave me some surety that the six-year, you know, because I was polling other people too and really wanted to poll people who would be interested in, in the school board, in, in our school board as opposed to just polling, you know, people who may not necessarily be as familiar with the work or the level of commitment. And it was interesting to get their feedback regarding the, the six-year term. My phone started ringing after the meeting.
Yeah, I, I had solicited advice from constituents and I had unsolicited advice from constituents, quite, quite a lot of them. And I had overwhelming, say, four years, overwhelming that in a district like Grand Rapids Public Schools, which is, and I don't want to insult anybody, perhaps a little more difficult than the library board or some of our smaller districts, because those people generally, in my experience, in smaller districts tend to stay longer, more and more terms. So, I was really pretty surprised at the amount of input that I had, and I really probably had one at most, two people, say, six years, which kind of surprised me.
Oh, Connor?
I would make a motion that we approve a option five of four-year term.
Support.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I would, I make a motion to approve option five for your terms.
This was a discussion, that's not an action item.
Not a.
It was supposed to inform the vote on the other policy, I think.
I can still make a motion to take action. Can I not?
Certainly you can, but I'm, I'm wondering, why would you do so when you intentionally asked for it to be put under a discussion item if you were seeking to make it an action item?
Well, we've had a discussion. I felt that at this time, I would like to take action.
Point of order, I think that I've already, I've already taken action, so, on the first read.
So, we have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor because there was support. So, now it's open for.
Who supported it?
I'm sorry. Dr. Foul did. So, it's open for discussion now?
No, I didn't have anything special about the motion, no.
Oh, okay. You wanted to discuss the, we can still be part of the policy for this chart.
Well, I guess I would just. Part of the discussion.
It seemed that, and I didn't do any personal surveying of folks, but it seems that, you know, you, John, Mo, I don't know, whomever else may have talked to various community people, and this may be a bit unorthodox, but I don't really think either way is head and shoulders above or better than the other. So, I don't know, would it be inappropriate to let there be some sort of survey link or something and let people decide which one we do? I mean, really, because it's all a crapshoot anyway. So, let's see what the people really want.
Such a way with words.
To be honest, I don't have any, I wouldn't have any objection to that. The only, the only concern that I think I would have is, as I was talking with, I don't even remember which board, you know, one of the things they said is, "It's important for people who are weighing in to really understand the work and how, how, you know, stability for students will be impacted." You know, sometimes you're just thinking, "I wouldn't want to do six years. There's no way, shape, or form in," as opposed to being educated about what that really means. And I think that if we're, if we're just asking random people, they may not know.
What about folks who are remotely educated, and no offense to district employees when I say remotely, but, you know, the, the people who are directly impacted by, by board decisions, parents and staff persons?
I think that's why we were elected to this position, to make that decision.
I got you. It's all good. I'm just saying, you know, we're going round and round and we're all talking about, you know, well, we've asked other people. So, excuse my slowness, but, but it's difficult for me to accept a comment like that when you already offered, that you asked other people because you want to get their input. So, let's get everybody's input.
Okay. Dr. Foul?
First of all, I want to say thank you to John's leadership. He's put a lot of work into this, and as you can see by this chart, it takes a little bit of smarts and time. And he did this immediately. We had a policy committee right afterwards, and he went to work with that. And I feel like it's very helpful since all of us have been confused as to how this would work out. I, I would still argue, I mean, it came out of committee. The work of the committee initially recommended the four-year based on a lot of the discussion that we then rediscovered at the board. And I would return to a lot of that. The main objection to changing from four-year, which has worked well, was that we could have a possible major turnover. And that is a problem. I mean, it's, we're not happy about the fact that we have, are moving from annual elections. But I would still maintain that the likelihood of that is probably not high because you usually have incumbents run again. It's a risk, but that's the, that was the primary objection to going to the four-year. Whereas, there's a lot of problems with the six-year because of the complications of that. The term length aside, I think the, the complications and the length of time that it gets to it, I think raises a lot of issues and a lot of problems. So, I, I still feel strongly that the four-year is, is serving us best. It has served us well. I think it could continue to serve us well. I think that it is very unlikely we would have a major turnover because incumbents, some incumbents usually tend to run again and win, so.
Ms. Keatsen?
I have to say that I'm, I thank you for all the work because I know this has not been an easy job, so I really appreciate it. What appeals to me about option three is, is the, the rotation of seats. One thing I learned on this board very quickly after beginning to serve is it takes a long time to get up to speed on everything you're deliberating and considering that impacts the lives of 18,000 children. And I think a six-year, quite frankly, right now, if I was sitting in this fourth year of my term, a six-year seat would, would be a lot more comfortable because I get this now. I, I think it takes a ton of time to get up to speed. And so, I'm very, I'm concerned about the opportunity of this big turn. So, I'll just go on record to say that. And I think there are other boards, I, I don't know if we talked to other, other boards that are like ours about six-year terms, but I believe there are, those are out there. So, and maybe they have big turnover that I'm unaware of.
Mr. O'Connor?
Well, I, you know, I, I think this idea of stability is slightly overrated. We live in a democracy, and when the people want change, they should have the ability to make change. If we're going to change this rotation because we think that it's going to allow us as a body to, to have institutional knowledge, I get that. I appreciate that. I think institutional knowledge, I mean, with, with the way the state legislature, legislature is on two-year terms, that's just absolutely ridiculous. To your point, Jane, you, you, you get in for a year, you, you start to figure it out, and then you're campaigning for the next term. But in talking to people who have served in, in our state legislature and have served in other elected capacities, the, there, a lot of what they say to me is that six years is too long, John. The complacency sets in. You become comfortable in what you're doing. You're not worried about, you, you may not care as much about the job at the end. You may, it may start to wear on you. Whereas, if, if you have a four-year term, it's, it's kind of a balance between stability and accountability. You kind of, I think you get the best of both, the best of both worlds, where you know that, you know, I've been on this board for just going, just shy of two years now. Came in at a pretty difficult time, and you had to get up to speed quick, but that was what you signed up for. I don't think we, I think anybody that takes on this role does it because they believe that they're going to make a difference and they're going to embrace it wholeheartedly. And they're going to do the work necessary to be a highly functioning board member. And I think all of us do that. And I'm, all of us have had to come up to speed quick. And are we still learning? Yes. But I think that's what, something, a tenet of what we preach every day is that you continue learning every day. You don't always know it all, but you're always trying to get better. And I think all of us as board members need, can do that. I don't, I don't think we need six years to figure it out. I think I'm a pretty competent board member after two years on this body, as evidenced by a lot of the work that I've done. And I can, I can say that all of you, I've seen the work that all of you have done in just a short period of time, be it four years, be it, how long you been on here, Kelly? Eight years, or be it, be it one year. I think we've, we're all, we're all able and all intelligent enough people that we can do this work even without six years on this body.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Baker?
Yeah, again, I'd like to reiterate how unfortunate it is that we, we have this tension and dissent on the board about this issue. And again, I think that, I mean, there's lots of problems. I mean, the two-year cycle, the having to run, I mean, it's just, you know, I mean, the idea of, you know, people who are out there or perhaps sitting here who have to figure out how to mount a campaign when we won't even know exactly what the terms will be, the length of the terms will be at this point with the November election, when we have, you know, Obama and Romney and senators and all sorts of people running for election, have to somehow knock on the door and be the 12th person to knock on somebody's door on that day to introduce a school board election. And so, it's with less funds because obviously people are, I mean, it's just, and then, not to, not to mention, members who are going to have to come in regardless of how long their terms are to figure out their role in a January, in the middle of a school year with a budget around the corner as opposed to the way it is now where we get the summer and the budgets have decided and, and board members can kind of gradually ease into the position and get some support while the school isn't in session. So, there's lots of reasons why this is a problem, and it's unfortunate that it's created this dissent. I, I would argue for this option, the four-year option. I think it's the most efficient option. It requires less change. We would, we're all used to having these four-year terms. I think the public is used to having the four-year terms, and it takes very little to implement any changes without significant explanations to the public. I think its, its greatest benefit, as is the previous arrangement, the yearly elections, was it allows for accountability. And it allows the public to be able to respond to directions that it sees is a problem. And only when a significant portion of the public sees a fairly drastic concern will it lead the public to be motivated to create a lot of change all at once to begin with. And so, I think that much, much of us, we could go through election cycles and not have much change at all, even with four or five people on the ballot, because we may have people who want to stay. And we won't necessarily automatically have a public that is interested in making change. But what it does do is it allows us to be accountable to the public and that we're not, and that we are seeking to understand and respond to the public at least every two years. So, I don't really, so I don't really buy necessarily that we wouldn't, just because we would go to the four-year terms, necessarily have a lot of changeover in January of an election year. So, we could have two of the four or two, three of the five, you know, or maybe perhaps four or five of all. I mean, so we don't necessarily know whether or not we would get a lot of turnover. I think that, I, I personally think that, agree or disagree with board members who have been on this board since I've been on this board, I haven't met many complacent board members. I met very impassioned board members, and we impassionately argued with each other about what should happen. There certainly are persons who have about, so I think the idea of whether or not four, six years are going to create more committed or less committed or less likely, I think that people that choose to do this work are going to be committed to doing this work. that people that choose to do this work are going to be committed to doing this work. I do think that, um, well, anyway, I'll just end with that. I just think that this is the most efficient and it provides the most accountability. And I think that even its one downfall, the possibility of a high turnover, is only the result of accountability and not even necessarily going to be true.
Ms. Geetzen?
I, I think to your, um, to your point about the mounting a campaign, I, I do believe that that could be a deterrent for somebody to run twice because I don't know what it's going to take to run a campaign in November. I have no, I don't think any of us know what that's going to take. And I'll tell you, we're setting some new records already in that world and I think it's nuts.
Yeah.
To do it every four years, I think the campaign alone could deter people from running again. And maybe you get, maybe you do get a benefit from being an incumbent, but I don't, I'm not sure how much when you're running in a November cycle because I don't think anybody knows your name when you're running with all the other people on those ballots.
You get that little I next to your name on the ballot, though.
If people pay attention to it. Some people intentionally vote against incumbents no matter what, so. Um, I think the campaign alone would be enough to scare a lot of people off if they had to run again.
Mr. Austin? Mr. Ross?
Um, actually, that was going to be my, my comment, um, you know, regarding to, to the, to the campaign piece. And, um, you know, maybe I just had a bit of an epiphany. Maybe I was looking more for the six because I don't think I would want to endure that whole campaign piece again. And, um, uh, honestly, you know, much like yourself, I think so far I'm pretty competent. And, um, you know, the reason I did this, like our little sign says, about doing right for children. And I'm, by no means am I anti-democratic, but my motivation around was not to, you know, um, further, um, support, you know, the democratic principles of our great nation. It was more so motivated by, you know, what's going on in our district and, and, um, doing whatever I could to help impact that. So, um, you know, although of course I respect the democratic process, that particular perspective really doesn't carry much weight with me because, um, you know, I'm not looking for any other political office per se, so, um, this is it. And I don't think I would do it again every four years. And I think that would be a bit of a deterrent for quite a few of us on this board. But, um, but also, I guess I wanted to also, uh, add some more weight to that aspect of institutional knowledge. Although I do think I've somewhat caught up to speed, um, as has been evidenced by some of my blunderings with motions and things of that nature and just kind of how things go, I, I would feel more comfortable, um, you know, with the longer term to really, really, really know what's going on and how to best, um, use the position to, to influence things for the district. And thirdly, I'm just not really seeing this greater accountability piece with the, with the four years as opposed to six years. With the six years, we're still going to have three people who would be potentially replaced every election. And, um, three people to board the nine is definitely, um, enough to swing something either way. So I don't know if I'm really seeing that. And I guess at the end of the day, um, again, I don't think either is greatly better than the other, but I still contend that I think, uh, six years is better for the board education.
Faul?
Um, I think, just to be frank, the accountability piece, um, the single most important thing that the Board of Ed does is hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent. So if you have a superintendent that, um, the majority of the community finds highly problematic and, um, the board that perhaps hired that superintendent is, is blind to those issues or, I mean, this is, this is the mechanism with which the community...
No, I'm, I'm understanding what accountability is. I don't need a definition for accountability, though.
I have the floor, my dear.
Yes, I apologize.
So, yeah, and that's the, that's the frank aspect of it. And so if it takes, um, years to get a majority of the board changed, then, you know, it, it makes it very long to have that kind of accountability for the superintendent. So it's, it just adds a level of responsiveness to the community as their public school, as a way to, um, register their approval or their disapproval with their vote. And it makes it very difficult for the community to register with that if it's going to take many years to change the board.
I guess all I was saying, I don't see a big difference from a standpoint of three being, uh, potentially swapped at an election versus four potentially being swapped at an election. And I know sometimes five, but either way, those three, um, are key enough to, to change the culture, if you will, of the board. So I think that that is an opportunity to, for the community to still have the control they need.
If you have to change the majority, who's in the majority and the minority at six-year terms, it takes quite, it's going to take quite a while to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Geetzen?
I'm trying to follow that logic because if, if, if somebody hired a superintendent in their first year, they would be there for four years. You wouldn't get the majority until, I don't, well, you may or may not get the majority. So I'm not quite sure how, how that logic works because when you're going three, three, and three, um, anyway, not quite following that, but.
O'Connor?
Call the question.
Okay.
Well, I have, I do have a comment to make. Baker, you have a comment?
Well, I just, I mean, I think that, um, you know, I mean, it, it takes election cycles to do it. I mean, and we, how many election cycles do we need? And, I mean, we've had, um, you know, we've had annual elections and it took a few election cycles to make things different this last time. So, um, I think if we had two years in between and only three, it would take the same number of election cycles, except it would take six years to get through three election cycles instead of three.
Um, my comment is, um, similar to something Reverend Hoskins said quite a while ago, which was, I already voted on, on the six or four-year term and I did that on April 16. That was the motion was regarding switching from a four-year term to a six-year term. And I, I have to be honest and frank, I, I kind of feel manipulated right now. I feel like the conversation at the very beginning of this board meeting regarding whether we really voted on action items and the request to go back and review the video so that we can make sure we're certain of what we've done. I mean, that seemed reasonable and that was kind of frowned upon and it's, I just feel like right now I'm, that we're being manipulated to vote on a four-year term because that is the motion that's on the table and that just doesn't feel really well to me. Certainly it is what it is and we will, you know, have the vote, but I just, it, you know, we, we often talk about this board and how this board, I'm assuming is supposed to be better than some other board, but this doesn't feel good. It feels a lot like a wool being pulled over my head. And I just have to be honest here in this room at this moment because this is when it's happening. And I just feel like I need to say that. Dr. Faul, Ms. Slade?
I need to respond to this because we, there is a, there is the articulation of the motion, and I will read it again, that was voted on.
I have the floor. I'm not asking, but listen, I'm not asking for that because I think that we, some people have not...
Ms. Lanier, I have the floor.
Some people have not. You go ahead, but some people have not reviewed the tape.
Point of order. I, I was charged as a committee member by this motion. Motion that the policy committee review the language in order to potentially establish something that gives the cycle for six-year terms. Mr. O'Connor went home and did the work of developing that and brought it to committee. At committee, the motion and the recommendation was made unanimously that Reverend Hoskins, supported by Dr. Faul, that the options be approved and sent to the full board for review and consideration. We followed process, we followed procedure. I was surprised to see in the minutes that the motion had been changed. I was surprised that there was a second reading when we had not voted on a first reading. I was surprised that the recommendations of the committee had been usurped. So I was troubled when I saw the packet this morning. I was surprised and I was shocked. I had followed procedure, I had followed the motion, the committee had.
Call the question.
Ms. Slade?
Call the question. It's a second.
Ms. Slade has had her hand up and she's been on the list. She can, she can have her comments and we can call the, call the question. I think it's only fair to let everyone have an opportunity to speak, Mr. O'Connor.
I could be very brief. In all honesty, I did not vote yes for a six-year term.
Thank you.
I voted because I was confused as to where I stood and that we were sending it back to committee. That was my vote. Now, whether I was wrong in understanding that or not, I'll tell you what I voted on. Thank you.
Ms. Geetzen?
So the, I think that if you can please repeat the motion so to make sure that everyone understands what's on the floor.
The motion is that we're voting on option five for a four-year term as, as laid out in the color-coded document, option five. Hoskins?
Like I said, I already voted, but I'll say no.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faul?
Yes.
Geetzen, no. President Lanier?
No.
Motion carries five, four.
So now we have action items that are second readings for action for policies 1030, 1152, 1300.
Motion to approve policy number 1030 with changes reflecting a January officer election term and leaving the membership section to read as follows. The board is comprised of nine members serving four-year terms and elected at an election held in accordance with MCL 168.1 ETSQ or appointed by the board to fill a vacancy. Second?
Hopefully somebody had all that detailed.
It's the, it's the same, it's the document that was in our previous board packet.
Any discussion?
I want to go on record, once and for every policy I will do this, that we already voted on this. This is misleading and it is manipulation of this supposed board that's supposed to be better than a previous board. That's my discussion. Any other comments, questions? You can call.
Hoskins?
Stay.
I can't stand it, so you.
Well, I won't vote. I may legal, put me out of, off the board, whatever you got to do, I'm not voting.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faul?
Yes.
Geetzen, no. President Lanier?
No.
Policy 1152?
Motion to have a first reading for the approval of policy 1152, election of officers and the length of term, changing the annual organization meeting from July to January. This will all be as exactly as written in the policy that is in the packet for this evening.
You says first reading?
Yes.
Did you mean second reading? Because you said second reading with the first, with the first policy. What was that?
We, we, it should be first reading. This should be the first reading.
Yes. No, it should not.
Is that not what I said in the first?
Yeah, you, no, you said second reading in the first motion. For 1030, you said second reading. That's why I asked.
Motion to reconsider policy.
It can, it can still have the change as a second reading. Legally, it can still have the change to go back to four. That's why it wasn't a big deal.
It's a first reading.
Yeah, it could have that.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Motion to have it, uh, motion to adopt policy 1152, election of officers and length of term, second reading.
Support.
Um, any questions, comments? The floor is open.
So this is, just since, in case everybody doesn't know, this is just simply that the election of officers would occur in January.
It changes the word July to January one, two, three times.
Okay. And that's the only thing that changes?
It's the only change.
I thought that was the resolution from last time.
No, that was to extend our current terms to January.
Okay.
This just changes the fact that we have an organizational meeting in January.
Okay. This one doesn't have anything regarding four, six-year in it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hoskins?
I'm confused.
They're just coinciding policies that have to be.
But no mention of the six-year term.
Mentioned, the only place that it has to, that that was changed is in policy 1030.
There was too many places. I didn't hear a support yet.
Support.
Um, Mr. O'Connor, can you repeat your motion because for the sake of making sure there's no confusion later because a couple, couple questions came in there? If you can repeat it, that would be great.
Motion to approve policy 1300, memberships, second reading. This, uh, policy will read with one change, the first sentence under organizational. The board holds its organizational meeting at the first meeting in, change the word, July to January.
Very short policy.
Yeah, there's, there's much more to the policy, but none of it has to be amended.
Now I need a support.
Support.
Support, we already had a support by...
Well, since he repeated, I wanted to make sure we had that.
So we just, I think...
Any questions, comments? I'm going to make my same comment. I haven't read, I haven't, I don't have those policies up. I still feel like there was manipulation and I also am going to go back on my vote for the 1152, which I can do because we are still within the same meeting. And I want that vote to reflect no. And I want 1300, I want the record to reflect that I think manipulation has taken place with this board regarding this policy.
Hoskins?
Stay.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faul?
Yes.
Geetzen, yes. President Lanier?
No.
Motion carries eight.
We're at the consent agenda. I'm, I believe that we should remove, um, the board meeting minutes for, um, April 16th.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, removing the board meeting minutes for the previous board meeting.
Can I finish my sentence? Out of all due respect, since Mr. Ross had a question wanting to review the video to make sure that the minutes reflect, um, exactly what he believed transpired, so I want to remove those. Now, Mr. O'Connor?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the board meeting minutes for the April 16th regular board meeting.
Support.
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faul?
Yes.
Geetzen? Yes. President Lanier?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
So what will we discuss?
And so now we have to make a motion in order to have discussion regarding the minutes for April 16th?
I make a motion, we table the review of the minutes to allow time to review the video.
And if, can you tweak your motion to not say review the minutes, but to say approve the minutes?
Yes. Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, table the approval of the minutes until we can review the film.
Support.
Any questions, comments?
Um, yes, I'd like to, there's no discussion on the table.
No, no discussion.
Okay.
It's a motion, okay, but, okay.
Because it's tabled, you can't, you don't discuss a tabled motion.
Okay.
Sorry. Hoskins?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randles?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faul?
Yes.
Geetzen, yes. President Lanier?
Yes.
Our discussion item was moved.
I have one card, are there any others? If so, please put them out to Mr. Helga.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, for those watching at home, just because it's televised, uh, you know, every board has some kind of an issue that people care passionately about and discussion ensues and what can you say? That said, uh, for the voter, in some respects, no matter what plan you pick, it's a bad choice. And they all result in the same thing for the next few elections anyway. So to some degree, the question is, will the legislature in six years make another change? The next election will be two individuals, the election after five. The one after that, apparently is gonna be four. Beyond that, I guess I would just say to this, uh, this body, there have been no significant developments in the last three weeks, which was the last meeting. So I really have nothing to report specifically regarding things going on right now. I would like to request, however, an opportunity to discuss with the board in closed session several items of concern. Each of these items of concern is a topic permissible for closed session under the Open Meetings Act. And due to the nature of some of these items, it's my hope that the meeting would be scheduled sooner rather than later. That's, uh, that's it from me. Thank you.
Do you need more cards? There's none. Madam Superintendent, you have any comments?
I do, just a few brief comments, President Lanier. One, it is Teacher Appreciation Week and so I really would like to, um, say thank you to all of our teachers for their hard work. And the next is the National School Nurses Day. We have so many of our nurses that are out in the buildings working, um, on behalf of our children. So I do want to acknowledge them. And then finally tomorrow is Grand Rapids Community College, um, the election. So many of our students, about forty percent of our students actually attend Grand Rapids Community College. So I really want to encourage everyone to go and vote tomorrow.
Dr. Randalls?
I just wanted to, um, I was at the track meet on Saturday at the EGR Invitational. And it was about the third time that somebody has mentioned a rumor about buildings closing in, in Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I think it would be great, uh, mid-level staff, mid-level teachers, administrators. This is not how the process happens. A building just suddenly doesn't go dark and it creates more anxiety when people keep hearing that from people who work within GRPS. So if, I think would help people feel a little bit better if there wasn't constant chatter of this place is closing or if the building closes, I'm gonna move there. It doesn't happen and if, if people could refrain from doing that, I think would be beneficial to the district and, and, excuse me, morale in general. Another thing I noticed in our consent agenda that we were, um, spending a lot of money, SIG money, on computers and technology and if we can evaluate needs and other areas, um, and within the district, that would be very helpful in order to sort of balance out, um, technology. And then finally about these sports, um, two, and I think I'm gonna talk with Mr. Johnson and the A.D.s. A lot of, it was raining horrifically, um, on Saturday and tennis team doesn't play if it's raining. But, you know, tracks out there, soccer's out there. A lot of, um, teams now have canopies. And maybe, you know, Student Advancement Foundation can help, uh, the teams. Either it's, it's blistering hot out or it's raining on the students and, um, a lot of our students come ill-equipped, no raincoats and different things. And so that, I think, would be really nice to have that available for setup. They were all hovering under the coach who had a big umbrella on Saturday. So, I, that's my, I'm finished.
Mr. O'Connor?
O'Connor.
Reverend Hoskins?
O'Connor.
Dr. Fall?
I wanna say I'm very pleased about the proposal in the budget to reinstate the elementary arts. And that, um, goes on the back of the presentation today. It has grieved me deeply to see the reduction of arts in our kids' lives in Grand Rapids and I'm thrilled that we are moving in another direction. I've had the privilege in being in a number of schools over the last couple of weeks and I am flooded with very specific comments from staff of how pleased they are in your leadership, removing unnecessary barriers, feeling a culture of support and change and moving forward. So I also wanna reiterate, get out and vote. And I can say vote yes because I do not work for Grand Rapids Public Schools. So vote yes on Tuesday, anybody could.
Dr. Baker?
Uh, yes. Uh, first, I actually take offense that there were on several occasions allegations of manipulation by members of this board. And, um, I think that I would like to, in our discussion next time, I'd like to know. I don't, I don't think that there was consensus on what was voted on. And so there would have to be consensus clearly of what was voting on for someone to have been intentionally manipulating the process to keep that vote from occurring. I think that, um, there is dispute as to how those minutes reflected what they did. I think that I'd like to know exactly what goes into it if, since we have recorded meetings, that we can have, if it, if there's a dispute as to the clarity of what was said in a motion, then the minutes should reflect specifically what was said, verbatim. And board members should not be, um, ever giving their input into what the intent was of a, um, of a comment or a motion, especially if there is, um, if there's taped recording. So, um, that's, that's in response to charges of manipulation, which I find offensive. I would say on more positive notes, um, I, um, have also heard from visiting schools, lots of scenarios and people running into that are very happy with leadership. This is like people at the city, people that work for Grand Rapids Public Schools. I got to visit Quaid and Palmer today, very fantastic, um, schools. And, um, Dr. Fall and John Helmuth were bragging about our schools to people who needed to hear it. And it was pretty, it was a lot of fun. And I also say definitely vote yes tomorrow to support our partners in education.
I'd like to thank all the teachers that have deeply touched the lives of my children and impacted their lives in a positive manner. I can't imagine my children without having had the experience that they've had in Grand Rapids Public Schools. They're better people for it. And I give a lot of credit for that to the wonderful, phenomenal teachers they've had. Also, I have to say thank you to my school nurse buddies, uh, being from Spectrum Health and be, and that outstanding partnership that we have with Grand Rapids Public Schools. Very proud, uh, on both respects, for Spectrum Health and Grand Rapids Public Schools. I, um, just wanna reiterate a quote that was said tonight that really caught my attention and that's, it's, it's, it's not if you're smart, it's how you're smart. And that is a very powerful takeaway for every child.
Oh, we're Gardner.
Amen to that because every kid is smart. It's just not if, it's how. That really touched me. And, um, as for the vote tonight, um, my feeling is the board has spoken. We have four-year terms. I'd like to just move on, so, thank you.
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
I guess just a couple of comments. You know, one, I really just wanted to thank John for the effort he put into this. You know, regardless of how it failed, I know that definitely was, um, a personal investment of time and things like that that you put into that. And being a newlywed and all, you know, you could be doing other things with your time.
Is the honeymoon over?
So in all sincerity, I really do thank you for your commitment on that, though. And I also, my comment, well, another comment was similar to what Ms. Geetzen just mentioned. I mean, you know, it's, um, it's done and I think, um, there was just some maybe confusion about, um, what the direction was. And I agree, I, you know, I think it, you know, it's a done deal now and, you know, move on and let it ride and let's wait for the next, um, opportunity to bicker. You know, but, but I also would encourage all of us, so there's about a month left in school and a couple of you say you have been in some buildings. But I will say one thing I hear often when I'm in buildings is people always ask, why don't board members come to the building? So with a month left, you know, I think it, you know, be pretty, um, pretty beneficial if we kinda just drive by. I mean, you don't necessarily need an appointment, you know, um, I just don't go in and disrupt the day-to-day operations. Maybe drive by during lunchtime when students are in the cafeteria, you know, hobnob a little bit and, you know, just really talk to some folks and really get some firsthand, um, perspective on, you know, what the educational experience is like for our students. And really, I guess, other than that, I had a quote from my grandfather, but I'll, I'll say that for another time.
It's not another false story, is it?
Fall, what are you saying about my granddad?
Ms. Geetzen, um, did you wanna say something?
I just was remiss in reminding everybody that there is a groundbreaking for our new Blandford School tomorrow at one thirty.
No, Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry, I'm rushing the week. It feels like it should be a Friday by now. Is it really? No, please. I gotta get up at four AM, so please say no. Yeah, so Wednesday, one thirty, uh, the new Blandford School groundbreaking, which is at the old Blandford School.
Felina, did you have anything?
Well, I, I just have a brief comment and, um, it's actually to your point, Dr. Baker. You are indeed correct. There was confusion, there were questions regarding those minutes and that's why I thought it was important, um, that Mr. Ross's request to go back and review before having the discussion was extremely important because there wasn't clarity. And so, um, just to let you know, I have a right to feel the way I feel. And I feel manipulated. And so I'm sorry that you're offended by that, but it's my feeling and I have a right to that. And, you know, because I think that it was very important for the body to have the same level of understanding as we're moving forward to vote on something of such significance. And because the body does not even now, I thought it would be important to honor the request to go back to take a look at all of that in advance of having this discussion and subsequent vote. But it's my feeling and it's, I, it's mine and no one can take that from me. And that's all I have. We just need Mr. John.